The hour of seven is struck. Please rise, as I call the meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order and ask our trustee Dropka to lead us in place.
We have two of our elected candidates who have been in the process of voting and on the nation under our supervision. We're going to give them their due due.
Thank you. Pete, Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
President.
Trustee Dropka.
President, accounted for.
Trustee Lumfer. Let the record note, not in attendance. Trustee Hollenbach.
Here.
Supervisor Wilt.
Present.
Let the record note Clerk Blau was in attendance.
And Michael Hayes, our attorney.
Oh, Michael Hayes, I apologize.
That's okay. Just for the record. All right, we have before us the minutes of the February 9th Riverside Township Board of Trustees. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the minute.
I have a motion by trustee Clark to approve the minutes of the February 9th meeting.
I'll second it.
Trustee Hollenbach seconds. Any discussion? Additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees from February 9th as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Are there any communications?
Yes, we have three. Access to Care sent us a very nice note thanking us for our grant of $5,000. It will be used to enroll nine low-income uninsured or underinsured residents of Riverside Township into the Access to Care program for one year. These residents will be assigned a local primary care physician in their community to whom they can make unlimited visits for primary care health. And they're thanking us. The second one is from Aging Care Connections. They're thanking us for our $5,000 grant. It will be used for programs for seniors and adults in the community. The third is from Best Buddies, and they're thanking us for our $2,500 donation. And everybody knows that that's an excellent program and helps the people.
Right. Thank you very much. None of that required action, so we'll place that on file. Are there any public comments before we get to the grants and new business? Hearing nothing, and nothing was submitted for questions. So we will move on to new business, and the first order of business is grants. Is there anyone here representing the Riverside Brookfield High School PTO? Would you please step up to the podiums in case there are any questions? If you would start by identifying yourself.
My name is Courtney Erb. I live in Brookfield and am in Riverside Township. My daughter Cassidy is a freshman at RB this year, and I'm on the board of the RB PTO.
Very good.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Vitek, and I live in Riverside. I have a daughter who is a sophomore at RB this year. My son graduated in 2019 from RB, and actually, we are both RB grads ourselves, and I am the president of the RB PTO this year and next year.
Very good. So we have a request for a grant for $750. Would you like to summarize a little bit what it is that you want to do with it?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. So the PTO, our mission, of course, is to support the students and the teachers of the high school. We have a very unusual school year, as everybody knows. I'm sure, you know, keeping up with the local news, you're aware of how all the local schools are doing. At RB right now, 50% of the students are welcome in the building on any given day to attend two mornings a week. So half the students can come on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, and the other half can come on Wednesday and Friday mornings, and everybody is remote together all day on Monday. But despite 50% of the students being welcomed back to the building, we have attendance of about one-eighth of the students who are returning, you know, for various reasons, you know, whatever their family decisions are about the safety of coming back, most of the students at RB are learning remotely. So the PTO recognized that there seems to be a gap for the students as far as, you know, their socialization with their peers, feeling represented at the school, and also feeling supported by the adults. So that's where we kind of, we tried to come up with some ideas on how the PTO could support the students in a way that would be unique this year, given the unique circumstances. So our idea is to provide what we're calling care packages to all the students, to give them something, to maybe give them a little stress alleviation, make them feel comforted, make them know that we're acknowledging them and the sort of difficulty of the school year that they're going through. Cindy, do you want to say anything more about it?
No, we just, you know, of course, we're very just concerned about their mental health. We're concerned about, you know, so many things have been canceled for them this year. They have not had the opportunities that other students have had. So we wanted to just, like Courtney said, we just wanted to give them a little something to help them feel like, you know, we see you, we understand what's happening, and we're feeling for you.
Very good. Are there any questions from the board?
I just, I have to say that I do appreciate that you did the math about how many people live in Proviso Township and Lyons Township and Riverside Township. That's very impressive. Thank you for doing that. The Riverside Township Mental Health Board provides a lot of services to the high school also. The support for you, which is the teen texting program, is a program through Riverside Township Mental Health Board. We pay, fund that whole thing. We also have a counselor there from Pillars. So I think, I understand completely what you're doing here, and I think it's a good idea, I really do. There's a lot of stress with these kids right now. They're at the boiling point, I know that. I hear it a lot. So I'm in favor of this, I really am.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve the grant as presented.
I have a-
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Dropka, seconded by trustee Hollenbach, to approve the grant as requested. May I just ask whether you have gotten any funds from the other sources that you had hoped for?
Not so far, but we were thinking that if we were successful here tonight-
Oh, then you'll go there.
-it's going to help us better make our case to Proviso.
Sure, use us as a guinea pig.
We were initially turned down, but not in a very formal sense, so we thought we would go back to them after we were hopefully successful here. I think it'll go a long way, maybe to encouraging-
Just wanted to make sure that you had enough funds for it.
Thank you.
And we have parents that have been asking how they can help as well, so we were kind of looking at our finances as the PTO, and then the money that we might receive from outside sources, and then saying to the parents, you know, maybe, you know, specific items that we're looking for. So we were just kind of gathering our resources.
Very good. If there's no other questions, then I would ask the clerk to call the roll on a motion that is on the floor for a $750 grant.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. We'll report back.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
And if you could, if one of you could call our office tomorrow till we make sure that the check gets to you as quickly as possible.
Okay. You're continuing.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the grant request from the Riverside Community Garden. Would you please join us? And same routine, if you would please introduce yourself, and then just give us a summary of-
Sure. Thank you for having me. My name is Katie Gregory, and I'm here to represent the Riverside Community Garden. I've been a resident of Riverside since 2014. The community garden, we're in our third growing season. Our goals are to really promote food growing within the community, to provide fresh produce to food insecure families within the township, and to create opportunities to build community through partnerships with local organizations. Did want to say thank you very much for the grant last year for $2,100. It went very far in helping our organization add new mulch and soil for some of the beds to purchase seedlings, soil amendments, trellises, and all the things that we really need to try and be as successful as possible. We can't control the weather, but we can at least put the right things into the dirt. So our goal this year, unfortunately, like 2020, we're not expecting to be able to host a lot of in-person events. You may say, well, how will we be able to build community and do all of these things? Well, last, at the end of January, we actually hosted a successful garden planning event over Google meetings. We had a handful of people come and ask questions about, you know, what is a raised bed? What is the benefit from doing that to this, and those sorts of things. And then just on Sunday, we were able to host another Google meeting on seed starting that had more than 20 people logging in on a Sunday night trying to, you know, figure out what kind of lamp you might need, what would work, how close that needs to be, is the right day for the last frost, April 28th or Mother's Day, you know, those sorts of things. Because as you can imagine, we've all spent a lot of time at home, or maybe you're aware of that, and there's a lot more interest in gardening and sort of getting involved in that sort of way. So we're trying to build community and encourage growing food through these online events, as well as, you know, hosting and using our Facebook page to generate a lot of information. We do provide the fresh produce to the food insecure families. Last year in 2020, we were, we used the grant funding to purchase seedlings. As you can imagine, the growing, or as you know, the growing season in Chicago is a bit short to start everything from seed. So being able to purchase those high-quality seedlings has really helped the garden. We've also partnered with organizations. We have a Girl Scout troop that's going to be involved in transplanting some of our strawberry beds and building a fake wasp nest to keep the wasps away, and looking to, last year, there was also the Tallgrass Sudbury students came to look at the garden and see if there were ways they could be involved. So we have been having, you know, as many socially distant, safe ways to try and bring the community together. So those are our goals, to promote that food growing, to provide fresh produce to food insecure families, and then to really create those opportunities to build community. We tried to take a look, and we would, we host open harvest days on certain Saturdays, and we've had anywhere between 20 people to 50 people attend those events over several hours. We've also then put together, we did 20 food baskets for senior citizens, and then there were a list of 10 families that we were doing deliveries to. The funds also help supplement, we took up a donation last year to help supplement those food, the veggie deliveries at the beginning of the season. You know, radishes come, are harvested earlier than some other foods, but that's not much fun to get a basket of radishes. We're able to supplement it with some purchases from local farmers markets. So just like to give, put your consideration in there, and you can also see, unlike the PTO that was able to successfully do math, I made an error, and if you look at the itemized items, that will add up to $3,310, but the number at the top says $2,810. I respectfully kindly ask you to look at the itemized list, but understand that that's not possible at this time.
Okay. Do you have any other source of funding?
We take donations from the community. We try to, you were, were, there are six of us on the board, we're trying to keep the system as possible. We're, you know, we've identified the township, they've been a wonderful funding source in the past, and we're able to get a grant from you. If that can satisfy all of our needs, that would, that would be great.
So what is the actual total that you're seeking?
$3,310.
So I will just tell you that in terms of, since you still haven't established any financial bank or anything, or opened any accounts, I'll tell you that doing individual purchases like this is rather labor-intensive for our purposes. Generally speaking, a grant is a single check. Potentially, when we deal with another government entity, we will buy a couple of items, but you know, when we start getting into eight or 10 different vendors, it starts getting a little complicated. For one, my proposal would be, and to wait, and I know it's always the purchase, and then write them a check, if it's possible perhaps to do some gift cards to these locations, and you may wind up buying things at a different place than you really wanted to, I don't know if that would be something, but anything that we could do to simplify the process would be very much appreciated.
Absolutely. And I was the member of the garden that came down to the township office last year before everything closed, and sat, and I believe that we were able to do, I think it was like three gift cards or something like that, and I realized that that does take time away for, you know, rather than writing one check to the organization, having to do that, it was appreciated. Just as a small organization, we were trying to keep it as simple as possible, but we realized that simple on our point then sometimes pushes the effort elsewhere.
Right, because we've become de facto your treasurer, you know? So that's kind of a difficult situation. That being said, I will entertain a motion and/or entertain questions.
Are you an official 501(c)(3)?
We are, we are non, we have nonprofit status through the Secretary of State.
They are Illinois, I did check it, they're an Illinois not-for-profit corporation, but I don't think you've gone after your 501(c)(3), which-
Correct.
-in most cases, you usually have to be established as an organization for a year or two-
Yeah.
-and have some financials to show before you can apply for that.
Okay. My second question is, this $300 for the purchase of additional produce and vegetables, can, does that go directly to the food insecure people?
That is what we had done, is a member of our, one of the volunteers had gone, and last year, what was done, go to the Brookfield Farmers Market because it's on a Saturday, and purchase the items to supplement, and those were them put in the baskets, the ones for the food insecure families.
Okay. And my last question is, I saw that you provided food for Thanksgiving to seven families?
Yeah. What we did was, that was an idea of one volunteer that was trying to think, brainstorming in community building, and we did a chatter up on our Facebook page and contacted Riverside Foods and asked, and let them know how much money we had raised, and Peter from Riverside Foods was able to work in the budget and provided gift cards to go along with the baskets for the Thanksgiving dinners.
I think that's great, but do you also know that the township provides gift cards at Thanksgiving and Christmas?
I did not know that. Okay.
And Easter, or last year, we did Easter too.
We did Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Okay.
And what we, we used to, excuse me, we used to do turkeys at Thanksgiving and like a ham at Christmas, and with the pandemic, it just became easier to go with gift cards, and I, it was so successful, and people were so grateful that they could buy what they wanted, that we're probably going to repeat that again. So, just so you know, that, so we're not all reinventing the wheel. If we could somehow work together, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what, and we have a food pantry here. Oh, that's what.
Okay.
Do you have a refrigerator for the food pantry?
We do not.
Okay.
And that's why, yeah. So, yeah, that's something that we've, we only do shelf-stable things, and that's why we have actually, so during farmers market season, we also give them vouchers each month. They're allowed to come once a month for two tote bags full of food. And then we've also been giving, we gave them three $5 vouchers that they could use at the farmers market. And I'd come every week and redeem them for the vendors. When the farmers market season ended, we continued that by, with the, with the bags, we also provide a gift card to either Aldi or Riverside Foods, because we cover more than just Riverside, and then, and so that they can buy fresh meats, you know, fish, fruit, vegetables, all of that, the things that are not shelf-stable.
Trying to make sure, if we had a fridge, I wanted to make sure we were putting food in.
Right. Yeah. Well, and we discussed that, whether we could, our refrigerators are on the second floor, our food pantry first floor. It gets complicated, and the biggest challenge is that our food pantry is open every day we are. And so it's not like there's a certain day of the week we could have the produce because the people come throughout the month. And, and, you know, things spoil, as I don't have to tell you.
The Presbyterian Church has a refrigerator.
And that's what we had been, we had put some items in there. I just wanted to make sure it was-
That's what, yeah. They do fresh produce twice a week, I think.
Okay.
I just have one comment here. I think this is a great idea. I was, I was gung-ho on it last year. But I have a question that, and maybe Supervisor Wilt already answered it, but I see that the food is donated to the Presbyterian Food Pantry, People Care, all these organizations, but not to the Riverside Township Food Pantry.
But it, that would be because it's fresh, and we don't have-
We don't have the storage for-
We don't have the storage for the length of time, because things have a very short refrigerated life as well. And we have, for example, we have certain weeks of the month, toward the end of the month, those last two weeks tend to be much busier than the first couple of weeks. But that's not to say that people don't come every week, you know?
Okay. Katie, thanks for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
No further questions from me, Supervisor Wilt.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant in the amount of $3,210 for the Riverside Community Garden.
I have a motion?
Excuse me, I thought that was-
3,310, because this-
He said 210.
Did you say 210?
That's what I, what is it? 3,310.
It's 3,310.
Let me revise that to 3,310. Good catch.
Thank you.
3,310.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve $3,310 as a grant to the Riverside Community Garden. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. For those of you who are here for grants, don't feel obligated to stay. You're most welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm really appreciative.
Thank you. Both of you have very noble missions, so thank you. All right. The next order of business is the approval and adoption of the annual town meeting agenda. That town meeting will take place on April 13th, but it is a requirement that the agenda be passed 30 days in advance, I believe. So you have before you the agenda. I will tell you that this is the traditional agenda. This will, this will actually, the reports will cover two years, because there was no annual meeting last year, and there were no other proposals, no other requests for agenda items presented by the public by the deadline. And so-
What's the time on this, Supervisor Wilt? 6:01?
It's 6:01, yes. Which we approved last, last meeting and last month. We also indicated that.
Are we, sometimes we meet at 5:45 to approve the budget. Are we doing that?
We are not, because we won't be ready with the budget yet.
Okay. All right. So 6:01?
Yes, we're not doing a hearing before. Yes, 6:01.
And it will be in this room?
It will be in this room for social distancing, yes. So what is your pleasure on the annual town meeting agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Dropka, to approve the annual town meeting agenda for April 13th, 2021, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is the approval of budgetary transfers. As, as you would observe, as you look at the budget, as we've been going through it, there have been some items that we've spent more than anticipated and some that were less. Just, things happen. So we have three different budgetary transfer appropriations to approve here. And- Do you want me to read them, or do you want to read them?
You can read them.
Okay. So the first one is, and it is because, based on the law and the, what is permitted, now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Township Trustees of the Town of Riverside in the County of Cook, State of Illinois, that there is hereby transferred from the unexpended balance in the item as contained in the general town fund in said budget and appropriation ordinance. Building maintenance account 1602, the sum of $12,000, which transferred amount is hereby added to the item as contained in the same fund of the same ordinance. Equipment maintenance, item 1608, the amount of $12,000. So transferring from building maintenance to equipment maintenance. And making the adjusted appropriations of the aforementioned items to be, building maintenance account 1602, the total sum of $48,000, and equipment maintenance account 1608, the total sum of $27,000. And I would entertain a motion to approve that-
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budgetary transfer between building maintenance and equipment maintenance. Any discussion or questions? Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
And on all of these, please don't run away, we all, we will need to sign all of these. The next budgetary transfer appropriations would be from legal services, the account 1630, the sum of $5,000, and transferring to accounting services, the sum of $5,000, that being account number 1626. So making the adjusted appropriations of the aforementioned items to be, legal services account 1630, the sum of $15,000, and accounting services account number 1626, the sum of $38,500.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Hollenbach?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Dropka. Any discussion, questions? Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on this one?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
And finally, we have a budgetary transfer appropriations for, again, in the general town fund, from bridge repairs, maintenance, and salaries, the sum of $2,850, which would be transferred, the amount hereby is added to the item as contained in the fund of the same ordinance, for tree removal, account 3635, the sum of $2,850. And that means that the adjusted appropriations of the aforementioned items would then be bridge repairs, maintenance, salaries, account 3700, the sum of $30,150, and for tree removal, account 3635, the sum of $4,850. And I welcome a motion to approve that transfer.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve this budgetary transfer from bridge repairs, maintenance, and salaries to tree removal. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, Supervisor's report. It has been a very busy month. COVID vaccine clinic was quickly organized in cooperation with the Stickney Jewel Osko Pharmacy. Trustee Clark connected me with the pharmacist who was willing to help us host the event when social media posts called for one. The entire process took just 10 very busy days, from the first outreach on Wednesday, February 24th, to the event last Friday. We started taking names on the 25th, expecting to have a pop-up within a few weeks. We posted information on our website and Facebook, and connected with our trustees and with some partners in the township, including the Assessor, the villages, the libraries, and People Care. On Sunday evening, Osko learned that they were getting 300 doses- On Sunday evening, Osco learned that they were getting 300 doses, which had to be delivered into arms by Friday, March 5th. We set up that and the second dose and which will be administered on April 2nd, Good Friday. That's a township and village holiday, otherwise. So it'll be just that going on here that day. Monday was Pulaski Day of that week, Township Closure Day. So Tuesday was spent retrieving voicemails, taking new calls, including waitlisted requests well beyond the 300. Osco started calling people on the list to book specific appointments, but quickly realized they could not get through all of them in that short time. They gave us a point on the list to start from and a link to their reservation system to also book appointments. So we booked the appointments, kept taking calls, made arrangements for the auditorium setup, dealt with the press, corrected our posts when Osco demanded changes, and the staff fielded angry calls since by noon on Tuesday, all we could promise was to put them on a waiting list. The event ran from 10:00 a.m., but people came to line up near 9:00 a.m. despite appointments. The crew was still setting up, so the first hour or so was a bit chaotic as so many people were waiting unnecessarily. But eventually, everyone found their rhythm and the event went very well. My heartfelt thanks to Trustee Clark and Trustee Highlandbach, who volunteered processing people through the event, throughout the event. Trustee Clark even brought food for the crew. Thank you to the staff of Riverside Township, who worked extra hours and answered hundreds of calls each day and sometimes suffered insults and name-calling. Thanks to the staff of the Assessor's Office for helping direct residents and answer questions. And many thanks also to Debbie Jensen and her pharmacy crew from Jewell, Osco and Stickney for all their hard work and kindness to the residents of the township. Now, we're preparing for Saturday, March 20th, a document shredding event that will take place again at the Masonic Lodge parking lot at 40 Forest Avenue in Riverside. The event runs from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and I welcome any of the board members who can join us to keep things running smoothly. The announcement was made through the Township Newsletter that went out last week, and an ad will be in the Riverside Brookfield Landmark both this week and next. The general assistance portion of my duties continues to keep me quite busy, as we currently have about twice the typical number of recipients on the flat grant rolls and frequent inquiries about both general assistance and emergency assistance. We were a warming center during the February deep freezes, and at least one tenant of the tower building came here several days in a row to be in a warmer place while their furnace was out. I also fielded questions on a variety of topics during that crisis and was ready, if necessary, to pay for shelter. It never came to that. But I had numerous calls about that situation, especially since one of the tenants is also an assistance client. I reached out several times to some of the agencies we support, as well as the Community Resource Center staff regarding places to refer them, and they were all very helpful. The painting and flooring in Room 3 is all complete, and most of the furniture has been moved back in. The former eight-foot conference table that was in there will not be put back because with the CRC office setup and the food pantry carts, it's a little too massive for that room. The room is not used for very large meetings. I would like to replace the table with a smaller six-foot oval table and only about four chairs. That would provide a better setting for my meetings with assistance clients, as well as a warmer setting for the Community Resource Center client encounters, once they come back to physically working from here. I should find that within the current budget even, and I expect to do that very quickly. Although I put budget on the agenda for tonight, it's really only to say that I want to hold off still in completing that discussion, as tax revenue has been slow in coming in since the county treasurer has suspended late penalties. I would like to have a better idea of where we are before making budget decisions. There was a request from the Mental Health Board that we earmark a little more for the CRC, depending on what those costs are for. There may be room in the general assistance budget for the Community Resource Center, but they have been of great help to me with the, working with the assistance clients. I'm still going to work with the, with our attorneys to see if that's possible, and if not, we'll, we'll find some room in the budget, I'm sure. And that is the extent of my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, first, I want to thank you and the staff too for putting together. You know, I know you were on the phone a lot with Deb, you know, on Sunday night. But it all worked out. I think everybody was happy. My other question is, are we going to give away gift cards for Easter?
That would be up to this board. If you would like to, you know, that would just be a part of the food pantry.
I don't think we've done it.
Have we ever done that before?
We've never done Easter.
I thought, I thought we got, did we give Easter bunnies last year or peeps or something?
No, we talked about it and then it kind of came up fast, and we did not.
Okay, and that was in the middle of COVID.
I would be more in favor of supplying like an Easter basket with candy and stuff like that for families that are patrons of the food pantry or general assistance or of that nature rather than an actual gift card, something for the kids, the families. But if they don't have children, then they don't get anything. But that would be my, if we're going to do something, that's where I'm coming from.
I would rather see a gift card to Aldi's or Riverside Foods. Not, you know, not as much as we give for Thanksgiving, but then they can, you know, if they have kids, they could pick out.
Sure.
Their favorite candy.
We don't have a lot of, I mean, mostly it's single people, seniors. We do have some. I don't know if I can actually identify.
Yeah.
Everyone that has children in the household. But we can try to do that. I mean, we usually put some little treats in all the bags anyway. We always try to have something, you know, for the sweet tooth. But that's up to you.
How do you feel, Trustee Hollandbach?
You know what? We do a lot for the residents on Christmas and Thanksgiving. Those are also cold weather months where it's difficult to get people out. I mean, I'm open to it, I guess, but we haven't done it in the past, and I don't know if we want to set that precedent. I mean, I, I just think that we do it for, you know, like I said, we do it for Christmas and Thanksgiving.
I do shop for the food pantry a couple of times a month at least. I could pick up some treats and just pop something in there that's very Easter-oriented if that's what, if that's what you want to do. We do give the gift cards every, we've been giving the gift cards with every food pickup since farmer's market. We've, we've continued to do that throughout the year.
So.
So it's included?
So, yeah, I mean, there's a $15 gift card and two tote bags in every food pantry allocation.
You know, we'll just keep it the way it is.
Okay. I mean, we could create some little cards or something to cheer them up or something too. We actually, I had forgotten to mention, the Riverside Junior Women's Charity also brought us about, I'm not sure if it was 20 or 25 Valentines little gift bags for our senior citizens.
Oh.
So as, as we've had those encounters, we have been handing out, they were lovely, the women all created lovely little gift bags, and we've been, we've been giving those out, so.
Oh, that's great.
Very nice.
Yes. So.
Did you know those were coming?
Pardon?
Did you know those were coming?
They did reach out first and said, oh, would you have the opportunity to distribute some if we brought you some? And how many of your clients are seniors and so forth roughly? So I gave them a number and they said, oh, yeah, we'll bring those over.
That's nice. That's very nice they did that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, it was very, I didn't want to, I didn't want to forget that, and I had forgotten it in my report. All right, anything else then? No other questions? Then let's move on trustees' reports. And Sister, Sister, sorry, Trustee Clark, I mean, so many fraternal organizations, I wind up calling everybody brother and sister.
Well, we're like a family anyway.
Yes, we are.
And Mike is the newest member of our family.
Welcome, that's all.
So, Trustee Clark, do you have something for us?
We completed on Sunday four new filming of exercise classes. We did it at a gym, Functional Athlete in Countryside. And thanks to the film crew that came over there and filmed it, and that went really well. I think the exercise classes are going to be much better now on film with the changes that we made. This Sunday, we're doing four yoga classes, which we're going to film, I believe, on the third floor. Is that right? Yeah.
That's where the mayor's room is.
Where they think they'll get a good sound up there on it. And then I will be making arrangements with them to film four more exercise classes with a different instructor. And I also want to mention that TOI Lobby Day is Wednesday, April 21st. It's all virtual this year. I got an email about it. I don't know if everybody got an email from the TOI Association about registering for it.
I don't think I did.
Okay.
Now that I think about it, no, I've gotten some other educational things, but we haven't gotten that. What's the date?
Wednesday, April 21st.
Maybe you got it early with the board involved.
Yeah, I'm on the.
She's a high polluter, yeah.
And then they also, I don't, you know, if everybody reads their Township Perspective magazine and gets to the last page, there's always a profile. So they want me to fill out that form. I don't, I don't know if I need permission from you all to do that, to fill out that form.
You're always in the perspective of it.
Well, you know, it's there. Well, this is a little more in-depth.
Absolutely.
Besides the picture.
That'd be fine. Any, any way we can showcase the good things that are done here, absolutely.
Okay, so that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Trustee Dropka?
No report.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be brief. The Mental Health Board has approved their budget. We are once again in budget, in line. Everything went very well with it. I have been in contact with the Brookfield Police Chief, and he has downloaded the Community Resource Center guide on his squad cars. And he is also expecting some of the postcards that were delivered to the village, to our township residents, will be going out within the next week to our local police department so they can hand them out to family members as they see fit. Our next Mental Health Board meeting is March 17th, which I expect that we will be getting some updates on how many clients we're, we're getting for the CRC. I expect it to be increased dramatically. I mean, just the first couple of days after the postcard came out, I think they had five requests. Right after, first couple of days. And I'm guessing with what Supervisor Wilt has had, along with the tower problem that they had with no heat, that should be, you know, the township did a very good thing by making sure that our residents, not only in Riverside, but at any of our township partners, are taken care of on that. And that's a credit to Supervisor Wilt and her staff. We will take care of our township residents, and that's what I'm most proud of. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Then we are on to, as I said, unfinished business, the discussion of the township budget. I have nothing really to present there that I didn't already tell you, that revenue is coming in slowly. We did get a little bit boost at the end of last week, but I'm waiting to see because we're only about neck and neck with last year, and we had a little larger levy, so it's not all there yet. Okay, then on to the approval of warrants, and who is going to present those this evening?
Oh, I am. I'm up. Quiet, quiet on the set. I'm up here. I, I make a motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified in the general warrant, March 2021, in the amount of $14,402.25.
I have a motion to approve the general warrants in the, for March 2021, in the total of amount of $14,402.25. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Dropka, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve the general warrants for March of 2021. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
So I'll make a motion to approve the utility warrant, the amount of $2,070.01. The payroll warrant of $17,708.49. A health warrant in the amount of $1,017.85. Grants in the amount of $12,500 even. General assistance warrant in the amount of $8,962.48. The radio players in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,074.80.
I have a motion to approve those warrants from Trustee Dropka. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Dropka, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants for March 2021. The utility warrant in the amount of $2,070.01. The payroll warrant in the amount of $17,708.49. The health warrant in the amount of $1,017.85. The grants warrant in the amount of $12,500. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $8,962.48. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200 even. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,074.80. Any additions or corrections? Any questions? Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on that motion?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. That is the entirety of our agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn this beautiful meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Dropka, seconded by Trustee Clark, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, meeting is adjourned.